And for the record, let it be noted that person's sandwich just said six. You'll join me briefly in our invitation. Father, as always, we pray for your guidance as we make decisions on that of our town, our community to do that in a just way. Um, till we always keep in mind the immensity of the duty that we have to our town and our community. We thank you for all of our staff and residents and blessings can keep them all safe and keep an ever lush line for our first responders and all of those to keep us safe and free. So we'll begin tonight. We have a service longevity award from our recent, just very recently retired companion Mark Distefano.
So those of you who were last time remember that we recognized Mark's retirement and I should see he didn't fully retire because now some of our reserve officers. But during the month of May, he reached a five year part of the town of Windermere. So like we always recognize all of our employees who are team members who serve for five, ten, fifteen years. We'd like to present this to you. It says presented to Mark Distefano in appreciation for five years of service to the town of Windermere in May 2016, May 2021. And it's presented as of the day of May 2021. And we also have your longevity service award presented to Lieutenant Mark Distefano in recognition of the five years of dedicated and honorable service to the citizens of the town of Windermere, the Central Florida Community, and the Windermere Police Department. Thank you.
We'll now go ahead and have our open and public forum. The opportunity to speak on any item that you wish tonight on our signing sheet for speakers. We have Robert McKinley, this is our Brophy, and Nora Roche. In that order, if you would come to the bullpen and go ahead and give your address for the record and all of your comment. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
What was your agenda?
It's uh, the movie.
Okay, it's coming up next. So I thought, I figured that most people probably want to comment on that. So I want to get them now.
Robert McKinley, 536 Magloire Street, Windermere. Uh, after reviewing some of this stuff, I did have some questions. Says the Rotary will have exclusive food and beverage concession rights for healthy west oriented Rotary events. Such events scheduled with the town manager. So we'll go for it. There's what about non Rotary and uh, healthy west oriented events? Would they also have rights to the concession fee?
Do you want to go through all the questions then?
I, I was thinking because we're gonna have the presentation, um, probably gonna answer most of those and whatever we don't serve, we'll make sure that that.
All right. Also says that the Rotary and Healthy West Orange uh, may use it for big and no charge. Is there a charge for other groups to use it, including town committees? If so, what is the charge and how would that be? Something to be addressed. Mention in here that uh, space for Healthy West Orange can organize, operate signature events such as a five K festival, performances, et cetera. The Run London Lakes five 10 K has traditionally been with the Parks and Recreation. And if you start allowing other five K events like that, I fear that it's going to start interfering with their ability to have a great function and say always have that. Finally, uh, get my eyes on the chance to speak this one. Delta action authority for the mayor and town manager. The town council hereby delegates to the mayor and town manager all powers and authority necessary to carry out this agreement. The agreement not limited to the ability to prepare, receive, and approve agreements and make decisions regarding project. I would caution council against advocating your authority. I don't really have a problem with the two individuals involved in terms of decision making process. The more you advocate your power and your authority, the weaker you become. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just wanted to knock those out real quick.
Sure. Can you do that or yeah?
Uh, as far as the um, exclusive rights to any and all events, it's just for those events only. Uh, other boards and committees can use that concession at a charge as well. The again exclusivity, no, uh, it's only for Healthy West Orange and Rotary events charged. We're not gonna charge boards and committees. That's the way to get money. For any event, they have to submit a special event and that would have to be approved by town council. I don't believe town council would approve any event that would be contradicting or competition to an existing fundraiser for a certain committee. So that's gonna be specifically up to town council for approval. As far as advocating any authority, um, any and all major decisions relative to this project, we'll come back to town council with forty five percent design, a hundred percent design. This is talking about minor, I believe, um, issues that may come up, um, changeover issues, um, minor details, kind of like what we're doing with town facilities. You've advocated a lot of that authority to John and I to go ahead and make those quick decisions on, we're trying to save trees. We had to do another pitch in our roof. That doesn't have to come back to town council because it'll wait thirty days for us to make that decision. But any and all major decisions will come back to town council.
Thank you, sir. Did that cover everything for you? Ms. Brophy? Thank you for your email. I didn't see this stuff.
That was a little late, sorry. Nora Brophy, 426 Magloire Street. Um, first, I'd like to thank Susan Carter and the whole tree board. We just finished a great project between Parks and Rec and Tree Board, um, replanting a bunch of trees at Central Park. And the park looks great and we really appreciate the help of Tree Board. And we'll be turning our attention to Windermere Rec Center. So.
Central Park looks very, very beautiful. It's one of the hard work on that. It's just trees don't plant themselves.
And then I did just have a comment on the pavilion, which I mean is really wonderful to have a pavilion here. I didn't, initially I thought this was just a pavilion and then when I read this proposal, it seems like it's morphed into the whole town hall area. And I sort of have two thoughts. One is that the big events like Pet Fest and Run London Lakes, we use every inch of that space out there. And if that is turned into a park, we won't be able to have those big events. So it would be kind of a shame to live in a pavilion to have big events and then cancel the big events because we don't have enough room for them. So that adds up a lot. And I'm also just a little concerned about all of the branding. I don't want to live in camping world Windermere. So I, I think that we need to give some thought as to how much branding we're gonna allow other people to have in our town. Thank you.
So Nora, I know that just a couple of things that we didn't talk extensively about this. So the concept is generally similar, footprint very similar. And remember that the opportunity for public input still remains for this, just because of what we're working on tonight doesn't negate all of those workshops and that opportunity for public. As with branding as well, sizing, colors. We want to be as reasonable as we can so people feel that they're in value, but we also want station to the, to the footprint and.
And just that's location can be shifted back even further if we can, um, making sure that we can protect the trees if we can, um, by giving you that event space that they need for Pet Fest, moving nights, stuff like that.
But those are certainly things that we're thinking about as well. We don't want to stop any of these. Um, we also gave the space for the station. Some give and take there, but we'll definitely go over. Ms. Ains?
Uh, mine is actually more maybe towards the road material and stuff like that. So I'll defer to Windermere.
That's fine. Great. Remind me.
Well, yes. Yeah. I don't.
All right. So, all right. So that's all of our public comment at this time for this particular item. This is item D. This is the Rotary Club of LLC presentation. And then we're gonna have the Mayor of Rotary represented, uh, present first George. Thank you. Come on up, sir. You'll give us your name and address.
I will, I will. Hey, Orion Councilwomen and Men of the Staff. Robert, thank you. George Calder, 405 West Third Avenue. Where we sign. Um, I have to come to this committee for the pavilion kind of later in the process. So therefore I gotta let you to speak tonight. So here I am. A lot of my Rotaryian friends are visiting us. They think it's church, but I'll sit in the back corner back there. So welcome. And my prepared remarks, which are not in that prepared, are relatively brief because what we're asking for is relatively simple, I think. Three and a half years ago, an idea was born to, for Rotary to give the town some sort of entertainment pavilion slash pavilion slash gizmo slash something. Kind of out here where the community room is, even back then it was being talked about destroying that building because it's a mess. We all know that. And so our fiftieth anniversary of our club was coming up at the time. And we thought that would be a great fiftieth birthday present to the town. We can pull that off. Well, that fiftieth anniversary has since coming on, as you know, and I think we're on our fiftieth second year now. But nonetheless, the idea is still germane, the still, the idea is still floating around, working hard. Some of you have been involved since day one. Some of us, I have some of our Rotaryians been involved since day one. Conceptual plan has been approved by the town council. As the mayor said, there's still lots of room to, to, for public input. We welcome that. We want to give the town what the town wants. That's our overriding goal. We wanted to make, for fifty two years, we've been in Windermere. Thinking Windermere a better, more fun place to live. And we want to continue that for the next fifty years or more and more. So, um, that's our goal. We want to give you what you want. So we, we need to know what you want. We need to have this conversation back and forth to know that, make sure that everybody is getting what they want. So during all those talks for the last three and a half years, the big anchor in the room was always, how the heck are we gonna fund this? Well, we did it. Some, through hard work and perseverance and all kinds of other things, we got a grant for a million dollars that we can announce tonight. Initially, it was announced Thursday, I guess, but I'll have noticed. But the West Orange Health District, through their Healthy West Orange Initiative, has agreed to grant us a million dollars to provide this pavilion. And so all we're here for tonight is something very simple. We need to unlock that, um, that grant. What we need is permission to start the process or permission to build. So that's really all we're here for, is asking, can we get started with this project and unlock that million dollars? And get going so that we can start these conversations and finalize our design, finalize our plans, and then get estimates and bids and all that other stuff that we have to do and move forward. With the idea, if we can, we want to be very aggressive about the whole thing. I think the town hundredth anniversary is coming up in a year, two years, something. Is that right? Twenty third, twenty three? Nice to have it done. I think July fourth of that year, that'd be kind of cool. We get the SUSA band out there and all that stuff, bunting and all that. That'd be kind of cool. So that's something to put in your mind. And, um, so that's really all we're asking for. Can we get started? That's, and there's lots of little details that have to be worked out still. That's fine. We know that. We want to do that. Really all about cooperation and building a useful, beautiful facility for all of the town to use. Uh, Robert did a great job answering the questions that were put forth earlier. As far as branding, branding is really very minimal. There's not gonna be a name plastered across the front of it. It's just two. We haven't even decided on the size yet, but two red ones, one for Healthy West Orange, one for Rotary. And that's it. No names, no, no letters, no nothing, just two gray emblems. And that's the whole branding thing. That is our concept. If, I, I guess I can answer questions if you have any. And other than that, I don't have any other big show or anything. We're just, like I said, it's a pretty simple thing we're asking right now.
Thank you, George. And we certainly appreciate all the efforts of the Rotary in terms of obtaining the funding. Thank, uh, this is a reality. So we got a couple of waiting for this council. Can we do the whole presentation and then have questions? Um, or we can go ahead and ask questions now. I mean, I think I would probably, if we were to give the whole presentation, I think most of the questions answered at that point. Sound good?
Yeah, because I have to let you know who the players are, uh, because roles are gonna have to change for this conversation. The reason why is because Heather Ramos, uh, is actually the attorney for the, uh, West Orange Healthcare District. So she is going to be conflicting out of this and speaking on behalf of the district. Uh, we have hired, uh, Mark Pelzman. Does that say it right?
Yeah.
All right, good. Um, as a third party, uh, legal counsel to make sure that, uh, we're protected as well. Now, the way that this worked was the agreement right now for the grant is between the district and the Rotary 501 C3. It's not the Rotary Club of Windermere. It's the Rotary's, uh, 501 C3. So the 501 C3 and the district have a contract to build a project on town property. Which means that the town needs to be, have some assurances, um, because we're gonna be taking over this building. And taking not only, not only the building, but also the perpetual maintenance of that building. And that's why you have a second agreement that's in there for approval tonight with the conditions that we laid out. That the project manager will be selected by the town of Windermere. There's, it says both, but it's actually just one project manager. We don't need, uh, two people. That the Rotary can display again their emblem, Healthy West Orange can display an emblem. That there'll be at least two workshops, uh, for the public to take a look at the concepts, the designs, both at forty five percent and a hundred percent. That the Rotary reclaims the bond for the construction to make sure that they're going to, that wherever they select to build the pavilion, if they can't perform, that is still covered and will get built. Trying to remember if anything else that's in there. I believe that's it.
The, uh, the input, the assurances. Quickly agreed on, project manager. Most everything else is addressed.
Correct. And for clarification too, any cost overruns are borne by Rotary themselves, themselves. No other party is contracted to help supplement the funds for the construction of this project.
Right. And we want to hear, uh, legal and, and you know, basically, so because of, of Counselor Ramos being, uh, represented for, for both of our organizations, we wanted to make sure that everything was very above board and that we had the oversight of under legal, that you need to make sure that we protect every receives.
Right. So that's Mark to actually take the podium now to answer any questions that you may add as to the conditions that are agreed to in the contract or in conditions that you would want to either more elaboration or for consideration to add to that contract.
Thank you, Robert. Sir?
Uh, thank you. Mark Pelzman, on behalf of the town of Windermere, thank you so much for the opportunity to do some good work and to help out. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you want to speak to the agreement at all or anything that you saw in the agreement or you happy where it is at now in terms of?
I think they negotiated a good agreement by the time it got to my desk. Uh, the exposure of the town is limited because it's the Rotary Club that, uh, is responsible for the cost overruns. So the town is limited to the expense of managing a facility once it's up and running. And that's part of what the town's already doing in a lot of different places in a lot of different ways. So the, the price, the initial price was right for the town and we wanted to make sure that there wasn't any other outstanding liabilities or potential issues that could get in the way. And I think, uh, those have mostly been resolved, uh, depending on what else to make the most of this evening.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Um, let me ask one quick question. I want to make sure that we, we haven't missed anything. And I know that, so as we are selecting individuals and entities that will work on the project, um, so the town itself, we always have to apply by our procurement practices. And I want to make sure that if we're putting, uh, if we're putting an agreement together for the Rotary to be some of the selections that we are following and binding by, doesn't have to be the town's process, but it needs to be a process that at least comes to council or, uh, to town manager for. Something reasonable to have in the agreement?
Uh, it is something reasonable to have in the agreement. As the agreement's written now, there is a compliance with all federal, state, and local laws. For an additional layer of protection, my suggestion, uh, to the town council would be to approve the agreement subject to some additional language about procurement or, or what that process is gonna be. So we have some, some goalposts and some milestones. Uh, I, I think by doing a provisional acceptance, we can move the project forward and also address the procurement issues.
Um, Counselor, any additional questions for our leading council seat?
Yes. Thank you. That's all for questioning there. Um, I, I, I think we should advocate the public to see the final approval of the RFQ before we get out from the pending process. Also, if this is being built on our, on the land, to make sure, uh, we approve the hiring of said person or company. And then I would like, I think we need to approve the construction contracts too. We may want to see things that are like draws at certain time periods. Uh, in regards to the draws too, is it in this or is it being held in some sort of best pro council? All grants funds are in a separate account that can't be commingled with other rotary funds. Uh, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're able to be as transparent as possible, uh, mainly to the residents of this taxpayer plan.
Counselor Person Set, one point of clarification. Uh, I think you, I just want to make sure that we're speaking the same language in terms of. So final approval of the RFQ. And then you also mentioned final approval of the end of the pool. So I just want to be sure.
Right. I, I don't mind if Rotary does their process and, you know, somewhere as to what we do with our commendations, um, that they would make a recommendation to council from, you know, their families.
Again, with the RFQ, the RFQ would only be for project manager. And instead of coming back to town council, you can go ahead and advocate that to me to make it a smoother process.
What about the actual contractor?
The contractor would be, it is through, it'd be through a bid process.
Right.
And that would be again negotiated between myself and Rotary as to what that bid process is gonna look like. Um, you know, I don't believe they require a follow CCNA and probably wouldn't want them to follow CCNA, but they would still have to go through some sort of procurement process that again I can approve and share it with you once it's approved or take a look at it. But the more that we put in the coming back to town council, the more that it could possibly delay the project. And I don't think that's anybody's intent. Um, but with the RFQ for the project manager, we pretty much give them what we did for the town facilities and go from there.
Yeah, I, I guess mainly it's, uh, because we have ongoing maintenance of this too, that, you know, we have a contractor that we're, we're comfortable with that not only just pitch up at the beginning, but it's gonna back over, you know, a few years. Because obviously there's gonna be some sort of warranty period there.
Correct. The, the bid docs will be created by whoever is hired as the design. They'll create the bid docs and that, that's what the, just like the Kim Horn situation does. You know, they, they create the, um, they do the design and they have the bid docs and then they go ahead and bid it out. It's usually a three day window for them to get receiving those bids and they open the bids and make this selection based on price and or experience and go from there. And Mark, if I'm wrong in saying any of this.
You also have that opportunity as well for certain parts of that prior to the planning process. So some of that, you have definitely, uh, the public as well as council and Rotary. Outfitting as well. Additional comments from council? I see Counselor Person Set. You have the first.
Uh, just a quick question. You know, with all the discussion previously, doesn't paragraph six have been a role of those decisions from town council, given the review process? What it says, town council, your viability, Windermere Town Council, all hours, or necessary?
That the intent of that was again, um, for the forty five percent approval and a hundred percent approval. That's, I believe states in the contract itself that that does come back to town council approval. But as far as the selection of the project manager, that would come to town council, forty five, a hundred. And then anything else would be advocated to the town manager and, uh, and or the manager.
Can you make that clear in paragraph?
It's in paragraph, uh, three, six, that we're talking about forty five percent inflation, a hundred percent inflation.
But language should we add to paragraph six to say unless otherwise addressed in paragraph three?
I'm just concerned with the rest of the council. Again, there may be some other, other items that we previously discussed that we want to be involved in. The word all is, all that comes with it. So, you know, I want to ensure that town council input is appropriate, um, when appropriate. So I, I understand your, your position, Robert, where you want to expedite and not bring it back to council, but it concerns me that, that we don't have that approval or new opportunity. The exception was Martin previously listed.
What additional items would you want to have come back to town council? For, I mean, would it just be reasonable to standard, okay, this is something that is a major change or a major issue that needs to come back to town council? Or can we work some of it towards vague enough to where, help me out here, Mark?
Right. I, I mean, I, maybe there's specific portions in the process where the, the town would like to be involved and make specific decisions, but I, I guess I don't. But I, I guess I don't know enough about the history of where those sticking points might be, but we can certainly incorporate that language. Or a more broad, uh, suggestion that if perhaps it's going to cost a certain amount of money or take a certain amount of time, then rather than bypassing the council, it comes back to the, to the town council.
Well, I think this could be, uh, select project manager and contractor at the same time. And that's one meeting and we have forty-five and then nine, I don't know whatever that, that number is. And that's not too many meetings to slow down the process. They need the project manager prior to selecting the contractor. I guess my biggest concerns here, I, I just don't want to get in a, a situation where we end up just taking the cheapest contractor. Probably your agreement is you're going to give one high, one low, and it's somewhere in the middle. It's always somewhere in the middle. You know, we don't want sacrifice materials, things like that, for a low price, just to make sure we get us a, you know, building mark board to have, you know, leftover money, so we can do something different. Just to make sure it's, um, the right. Especially since we've got the first of, you know, payments that you. I don't need so much of the complicated, um, you know, you know, all the streamlining that's impossible.
I mean, we're at the discussions on council, so whatever conditions, requirements that you would like to see in the agreement, we'll include those and then take it to the, um, Rotary Board, um, and see what their comfort level is. If they approve it, then yes. If not, then we don't move forward.
Correct. So I, I, so I'm keeping a little, keeping a little tally so we can, we'll, uh, after getting input from everybody and let's see what we can combine, but might not be able to combine. Parties, uh, parties. Um, we move in process and see where we go. Um, additional comments from council?
There are specific draws in the grant agreement. I think it's two hundred thousand, uh, four hundred thousand and four hundred thousand. So there's different milestones. Two hundred thousand is once the agreement between the town is achieved. Then they get two hundred thousand or to hire a, um, project, um, manager and a contractor designer. Um, and then the second draw, I forget what the milestone is. Someone can correct me on that one. And then the third, the third draw is at fifty percent completion of the project itself.
Yeah, I didn't know there was any contractor, you know, that developed it.
Council, any additional comments, questions, concerns?
Yes, thank you. Yes, Mary, thank you. Um, so we're, we're talking about competitive bidding for contractors to build this. Correct. That, that was not part of the original agreement. That's what we're requesting.
That, that would be my request. I do make sure. Again, this is all just to go with the city, you can make sure. For your standard practice, if you don't use that, that's the challenge.
I, I would prefer to see that as well, just to keep everything above board. The only possible exception would be for the architects. I would have no issue with Hunter Brady continuing forward with, uh, you know, the architecture portion of this because they've already contributed five or six thousand dollars worth of work to the town. Uh, in Fred Pryor's honor, and we, we already had a commitment to, uh, to place a plaque with Fred Pryor's name on the building, I believe. So we got to make sure we don't forget that. Let's make sure we spell his name right because it's spelled wrong in the agenda. So, uh, just to point that out. Uh, also, um, the spurs, the basketball courts, uh, the five K, the site for the exercise, the equipment, it's that. To be determined, or should we scratch that at this point because the basketball courts are, uh, maybe at this point. We, we did have those courts researched by a resident in the past and, you know, some folks feel that we shouldn't rename the courts, you know, apply the branding to the basketball courts. Of course, the issue with the five K is it's a very valid one. Not saying that we never have a five K, uh, or another entity, but if it's in there, it must be, you know, something they're allowed to do. Scratch that now or can we do that later?
So it's my understanding as far as the basketball courts, George, you can correct me if I'm wrong, sir. Um, my understanding with the basketball courts is that was more of like if they were damaged, then the funding would be used to make sure that they were kept in kind. Uh,
Yes, they were.
Um, but I didn't, I didn't, is, is there a naming obligation there?
There is. I think so, no.
Yeah, I was, actually, we can clarify that right now. We have a naming obligation there.
We're just naming the pavilion itself.
Right.
And there's an area behind it that they want to put some minor either benches or exercises. That'll be named Healthy West Orange Park or, you know, Park Course, whatever, whatever name we come up with.
Well, it is okay to fifteen in the agenda. It says provide pavilion naming, park and basketball court branding under the Healthy West Orange and sign it outside.
I don't think anybody intends to take away that family name.
Yeah, Pete and, and then George, if you would, um, I'm sorry, if you want to clarify for us, if George, he doesn't, uh, and, and so we don't lose our comments for, uh, all of us here.
Yes, I, we don't intend to take away the family name from something. And we do intend to fix the basketball courts if they do get damaged. And as far as the five K, I think those were just examples of things that Healthy West Orange does. They're not proposing to do one here. What they want to do, what they want is the right to hold some events at the pavilion once a year, whatever that event is. And since we already do a five K, they're probably not going to do a five K here. Why would they do that? But whatever, they come up with all kinds of things. They do dance-a-thons, they do jessercise. I don't know. They have all kinds of things. So those were just examples of things they have done, not things they are proposing to do in Windermere. So I think we could, right now, put the five K to rest unless our traditional five K goes away. Maybe even correct that.
So in council, they'll always have, um, you know, they would have that ability, what this is for. Um, and the other thing I think that it is, just, just so everyone understands too, that so Windermere would not be the first community to have a Healthy West Orange pavilion or concept. This is done in, it's been done in Hamlet, uh, it's been done in several other areas in West Orange as well. So, um, it is kind of proven in terms of that. So I think that, uh, we just need to make sure that we make sure that what we want and what's best for.
I'm excited and thrilled that you guys got the finals. This is fantastic. Uh, that, that, I know you were struggling to find funding for the project and I think it's just great that, that you were able to nail that down. So, thank you for your efforts.
So, I mean, we can clarify the naming rights to the basketball court in the agreement between the town and the Rotary Club, just to make sure that that's clear. Um, and again, any other conditions that you want, you have Mark here that can add those conditions and take it to the Rotary Board.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any additional council input? Any, you're good? Okay, just want to make sure I don't leave anybody out in terms of, uh, all right, so, um, the items for, I believe, I'll just list these off and, uh, we'll come to the motion maker. The council desires to move forward. Um, project manager approval. Procurement process does not have to necessarily be the town procurement process or, uh, but it has to be a approved procurement, uh, process. Council can determine whether that is able to be approved by town manager Smith or whether you guys want that to come to council. They already have the forty-five percent design and hundred percent design for, uh, public workshop plus council approval written in. Stop me anywhere I'm not correct. Um, we have a draw scheduled in, within the agreement.
It's practical.
Okay. Um, and councilor Martini wanted to add the architectural contracting as something that due to the, the previous donation of time and effort, uh, that would not be included in the procurement process, is that?
Yeah, I mean, they're willing to move forward, uh, at a reasonable rate. I don't see why not because, you know, they've already, you know, they've shared it in these sense of that time and ever. I'm not sure if they're, where to go forward, but.
We can put it as mutually agree to one hundred, or if you continue as the architect of the, um, project. And then I do believe you made a condition as far as approval of the contract.
That's right.
From councilor Martini.
Councilperson, so I, I would be fine with the procurement process if, you know, if you add it to the, the roster. But then the other side, you have done, I'm just, uh, uh, more so, once you go through that process and we get the bids, maybe just one meeting, you knock out, picking out the manager and, and pick out the building. We already have, uh, the architect in place, which presumably would be the final design, so we can start running still. So that's, that's one meeting and then we have three, five and a hundred. So it's just three meetings to get it done spread out over, you know, twelve, eighteen month period.
Yeah, what I should, she said, we need to get the project manager and then you're going to have the architect and you won't get to the contractor until after the project's gone into procurement process. So they have to come back with a recommendation from the Rotary Board of who they want to select, of course.
I, I also believe that we're going to have, we're going to have several opportunities to make those selections. I mean, we'll go ahead and put it in the contract so it's there for a hundred percent. And then, um, we'll, we'll have that opportunity. I don't think that will necessarily require a special meeting or anything because we're going to have, we've got some work in front of us to make sure that the input is received and that we, um, you know, spec out a project that is going to be, that we want to make sure that we have. And what, you know, because there's, there's basic design criteria in there, but there's still size. There's still, uh, what you want, the, the healthy living portion of it to look like and all of that. So my hope is that we're going to get some great input and everyone will be able to that and we'll be able to move forward. And, you know, make sure we're, we're going to be above board and then we'll go forward.
Yes, that's my, making sure that, that's, that's a big concern.
So basically, uh, at the end of the day, if you want to see the contract back in front of, the contractor back in front of council, it's like,
I would feel more comfortable, but, uh, I would concede, you know, if we approved the project manager, you know, knowing other credentials are a bit of a contradiction, so, you know, we're going to sketch the, the personal contract out.
Council?
I was going to say, you know, everybody else is off, so I don't think we want to approve everybody.
Well, I mean, you know.
In order to, I would just approve everybody, talk to them.
Exactly. And I think that we, I mean, by the time we get to that point in the process, I feel like we've done a good job with, with contractors and such. Again, also, if council wants to see it back, then see the work and add that in. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I think you should be reviewed by town council for the contractor, the general contractor.
The contractor and project manager.
All right, so contractor, project manager, procurement process, designs are in here, so I'm not going to talk about that anymore, just so that someone knows how that ended up. The draw schedule is also included, we'll mention that as well. Um, architect goes up, being part of that process. And the only other item that I had here was to, like, to just, uh, item number six.
And as far as the procurement, that was just the town manager who backed to.
I can't say for everybody else, I'm comfortable with, uh, as in.
Okay.
As mine.
Okay.
Council? General, okay, good. All right. All right, so we're going to strike that. So we're at contractor and procurement process. And any adjustments to number six, if you've got, so sorry, by council.
And the adjustment would at least be to stay unless otherwise specified in paragraph three, E, just to make sure there's no conflict in the document.
That seems fine. Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
What does the item of the review, is there any major, uh, project, uh, changes from the, from the design? If you have a different site addition or construction or some kind of price change to the design, I think that town council needs to, any of those quite opposed to dollar value or whatever, uh, the rest of council terms appropriate. Anything that's a, a deviation from a hundred percent design, I think town council needs to.
So any, any major deviation from the one hundred percent design guiding criteria?
Yeah.
Major meaning?
Like the example I, you know, you know, you have a hundred percent design, then you bid out, comes back, it's over one point four million dollars. You may have to get rid of this, or you may have to get rid of something else. Um, that would be a major deviation from what we agreed upon and that would definitely come back to town council. It'd be a board certificate within the agreement.
Okay. Right, so with those so noted conditions, uh, we're looking for a motion to approve. My motion to approve. For a second, I'll, all right, so first by councilperson staff, second by councilperson Martini. Any further comments, questions, thoughts, council? All right, seeing none, we'll begin, go to councilor Williams.
All right.
Aye.
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 So that motion here is amissly. It'll, it'll get us all there and it's going to be, uh, it'll be a very good situation. So thanks for everyone's support on that.
And I'm not sure if everybody wants to stay for the entire rest of the town council meeting. So anyone that had a two minute recess if they want to.
It's like beers are in someplace, right?
Yeah, and we can also, can we, can we excuse Mark, uh, since he's on our, uh, faculty, right?
Of course.
I'll have to talk, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Robert, next time we put Rotary last.
Everyone getting a whole way.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very well. Thank you. Appreciate it all.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it all. That was a lot of work.
All right, I know what that meant.
Well, if we, uh, you know, we should, this is my action.
Thank you, Oliver. I know, sometimes we're in the process of it all.
How you doing?
Of course, we got to.
How you doing?
All right, so we're ready to leave that business floor. So next up, we've got some, uh, actually some, some very, very important books. Um, so I am seeing, it's a National Public Works, uh, proclamation, uh, this is May sixteenth to twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Stronger here. And I have the proclamation here, uh, attached. I'm going to read it if that's okay. If you guys are like, we appreciate you guys so much. And I know that, uh, this last year's really challenging and it's also challenging to come to meetings and everybody, you know, talks about and picks apart and re-engineers your stuff from up here and that's, that's always on to you. So, uh, the way that you guys do that, the way you communicate what's important to our town. Very, very, uh, important and we appreciate it. I know it's not all. So I don't read any proclamations, but I definitely don't read these. So this is National Public Works, we proclamation, we sixteen to twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, stronger together. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital and important to sustainable and resilient communities, which has a public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the town of Windermere. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals or engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it's in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children who are non-winning to gain knowledge to end of, uh, knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works, the public works programs in respective communities. Whereas the year twenty twenty-one marks the sixty-first annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. and oh, and the Canadian, they, they got Canada in there too, so Association, Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events and ceremonies are contributing to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions that they've made in protecting our national health, safety and quality of life. And as we're aware of, I have your own two said again, cause the seal to safety be fixed on the town of Landry. Or this eleven day of May twenty twenty-one, some Jim O'Brien, the mayor of the town of Landry, come down and will present this to you guys in town. I want to thank you guys for all the great PR.
And if you think infrastructure is an important target and gas is in about forty.
Mr. Eric Donheim, I would like to recognize Brian, Caleb, Rick and Travis and our next generation of public works professionals as well who are here this evening. They do a tremendous amount of work and we may be small, but we are mighty. And I just want to thank them so much for welcoming me here and being such good representatives of what good public works services are. So thank you so much, gentlemen, for all that you do. [applause]
The multitask is so good.
I put it without the mask.
Thank you all.
All right, next up, our new public works director, Tom Elliott Moore, will be presenting our dirt road maintenance program. Are you gonna do that up here because I'm gonna go down to the right side?
I'm gonna stay here because I'm actually operating this, so I'm not being rude, I'm just gonna multitask down here. So the same thing I am very proud to let draft the dirt road, make these plans for the towns their roads. Development of this plan is a collaborative effort between myself, the entire public works team that you saw, and Jonathan's given, as well as input from some of our aggregate material vendors that we've been able to connect with. In working to develop this plan, we took the following into consideration: improvement of the roads, the addressing of environmental issues, and firstly, placed prime concentration on what is most important to the community. With that in mind, our investigation put maintaining the charm of the community first. And so what does that mean? Means looking for better performing material that still looks like the same, looks the same and maintains what it mirrors character. An added benefit is that better performing material will make in-house maintenance easier to accomplish. And as you, as I, as you saw, we're small but mighty, so we are always looking for ways to improve the maintenance. Improved maintenance applications need better quality of roadway for the town residents to use after rainstorms and in between maintenance schedules. And finally, we do want to protect our water quality, which is a requirement of the environmental oversight agencies and improve erosion issues throughout the town. But there is another reason to continuously improve materials that we use, and that is to be physically responsible as roadway improvements help to protect property. So what are some of the factors we know about our dirt roads, or dirt roads in general? First, dirt roads here in the town are a mixture of sand and shell. Factors that impact our dirt roadway performance include the volume of traffic, the speed of that traffic, the traffic types, such as the size of the vehicles and how often or frequently they're using the roadways, as well as the drainage systems. And a huge factor here in Florida is always the weather. Erosed and unpaved roadways associated with drainage systems are most often the biggest culprit in compromising roadway's integrity, which is why, and we saw it on social media, we had a contractor out here listening with us the other week to take a look at those soils and drainage ditches so we can put perhaps a maintenance program for those as well. We need to ensure these systems are all doing their part. Another factor is excessive disturbance of the roadway, roadway by too frequent a grading program. Grading should be properly timed and not excessive. All best management practices relevant to dirt road maintenance all agree on this point. All the experts have agreed to that. So how do we know when to grade? We'll get to that. We need to be proactive and not reactive. We need everyone to have a comfort level of knowing that public works is consistently having their eyes on our dirt roads. Currently, some of the major issues we're combating are wash warning, erosion, potholes, wash outs, sugar sand and conding and pooling. We need to have a set plan for monitoring each dirt roadway. And we need to be able to log it, track it and take photographs so we know what's going on with those roads. So why would we want to log the condition of a good roadway? Because we can learn just as much from a roadway that's performing well as we can from one that's not performing well. So we want to be able to make sure that we've captured all of it and give residents a comfort level with the fact that we are checking them. And roads can be fine one day and not so fine the next day. So we want to make sure we're out there. We can then, through these photos and notes, work with our consultants on areas that may need more substantial fixes. This data can assist us in developing a work of maintenance plan and to provide organized repairs and developing design solutions. A critical component to all of this is to get input and more input from the residents. So this is why we want to pilot some areas and I'll explain that later as well. These pilot projects will not only allow us to test these new projects, but also some new maintenance techniques. One example is to roll the roads rather than grade them. Not with vibration, just so you know. All of the best management reports that we've taken a look at said that you need to actually roll in and not grade as often. So we want to take an opportunity to roll some of the product in and see how that holds up. And in certain conditions, they also recommend scarifying, so we're gonna be doing some of that as well. So when we, we work with pilot areas, we're going to employ these techniques and track and monitor how the techniques hold up over time. So how does this plan work? We're gonna be dividing the town into two sections and we're gonna have two public works teams. Section one will be everything east of Main Street, section two will be everything west of Main Street. And there'll be a public works team assigned to that. And I want to note here that it's important to understand this is gonna be a flexible, ever-evolving plan. And much will be gleaned from this data that the teams were out gathering for us. And it'll also help us look at those innovative products. Continuous improvement is always a valuable strategy for anyone to employ. Our plan is to divide this town, we can send it to two sections and on Monday, the gentleman will go out and check everything. The reason why I want him to go out on Monday is because if we've had some rain, it's or some storms, I want him to be able to check those Monday right away, right away and see what the conditions are, log those conditions. And then why would we do it again on Friday? Because we won't necessarily leave here over the weekend, so I want him to check the roads again Friday, make sure everything's working correctly, plus the tough, good roadways to travel on before we leave for the weekend. So that's the idea between Monday and Friday. And that's in non-raining season. In rainy season, the teams will go out and check the roadways immediately after the rain situations, so we can monitor all of that. So this is what it looks like when you look at the sections one and two. And Mr. Fitzgibbon gave me sub-basins in all of those areas, so you can see those as well. He's very proud of the sub-basins. And I never wanted to disappoint John.
You have a home.
So the plan schedule, as mentioned previously, we work on a set schedule and it'll be Monday, Friday during the dry season and more quickly in the rainy season. And we'll check that, we will check after each rain. In fact, I would like to thank you very much for calling me the other day and saying, hey, you better get out there and take a look at this, this area, so you can see what it looks like after it rained. And that was very, very helpful, so I appreciate that. So what are the public works monitoring teams doing? We've created a tool for them on the left-hand side, so they will have this on their cellphones, it'll be a link. They're gonna be able to go out and log certain conditions that they're finding, give us the GPS coordinates as well, and then the address that it's nearest to. And then they'll take a photograph and that gets submitted. And on the right-hand side, that, what gets submitted creates a database with all of that data. We can then share that with our engineering teams, we can look at over time what's happening with the roadways, maybe see certain things and also allow us to actually develop immediate, long-term and capital solutions from this data that we're collecting. And most importantly, figure out how the new materials are holding up as well. So where are some of these new materials gonna go? So the innovative new solutions to pilot are gonna happen at Forest and Third Avenue. We're gonna rebuild a small section of this road utilizing bank one shell. Bank one shell is something that our engineering consultants recommended that we take a look at, DOT is using that. It actually looks exactly the same as the product we have on the roads now, except it doesn't have those big comp shells in it, which actually is good because the big comp shells can actually trap oxygen underneath them, which can create some of the pothole and some of the vacant areas of the dirt that we're seeing. So we're really excited to try the bank one shell. And when we were investigating that, one of the consultants and contractors came up and said, listen, we've got this new paper-based material. So he brought it out to us, both materials out to us. And the paper base is actually the bank one shell, but it's gone through a third string. So it's taking out the bigger rocks, so you won't have those picking up. It also helps to keep the dust down. And Osceola County is one of the biggest clients for that and they've been getting this paper base over the bank one shell because they want to keep that dust down and this does a little bit better job of that apparently. So we want to at least compare these two side by side and see how they do. And I'll do something similar for residents to be able to submit to us. They can go by and look at pilot site, they can tell us what they think and submit that, so we'll get feedback from the residents as well. Pilot number two is gonna be Fifth Avenue by the lake and we're gonna utilize bank one shell down there and see how it goes. So those are the two projects we're gonna start with. We don't want to go townwide with this because we really want to see how it works, how it holds up and whether it's gonna be a better product for the citizens as well as for us. So that's my presentation this evening on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the most engraved area on dirt roads. Thank you very much.
Is that a second clue to this?
I did not pay him, I promise.
Counselor, any questions, thoughts?
I have some time, you're very important on this, on the plan. A couple of questions. First of all, the pilot program, how long do you plan on winning the pilot?
So we actually have the materials coming next week, they're gonna be coming on the nineteenth, maybe whoever, we're getting the whole were set up as well for that. So I want at least three or four weeks test it and have people go by. We'll announce it on social media when we're ready for you to go by and we've got it all open and everything's ready to go. And we'll make sure that everyone knows about that signal by three to four weeks at least. I want to at least get it through a rainstorm of some kind, see how it performs, holds up. But I was, you know, John Fitzgibbon and I were pretty impressed with what we, what we laid down next to our yard the other day. So we're kind of hopeful that this is gonna be a great, great new product.
And you see, what color is it?
It's the same color as what you have now. In fact, we laid it on the road next to public works, we laid it along on Seventh and you can't tell the difference. John actually went and jumped up and down on it, compacted it, so we're about to go look at it the next day and it, it does it, it kind of formed together. So it kind of stays together, it doesn't get dusty.
So this is, this is definitely a good test and good progress point. Couple of things, I just want to remind everyone that, or my counsel, that I don't leave, that we say, if we put anything new on the road, we would do it, right? So this is good that we're here, so we can hopefully do that for you. I just want to make sure, so that is definitely something that I recall, like, you know, about, I believe, from council person. See, I didn't remember. Um, you can make sure we do that. So, any other questions that we have? Councilperson Deb.
Sorry, Mayor, I got two.
No, it's, you can have a meaningful one, that's why you're here.
Right, so second question is, after the pilot program, what is next? So are, is, is your intention to then produce guidelines, creation plans, prefer...
So one of the things that we want to do from the database collected as well is create kind of a plan of attack for those areas, so you can start to see areas that are not holding up as well, may have some issues. What we want to do with that database then is have another column that lets my team or anyone who comes in, what's, what's strategy for this road, what's the care, what's the maintenance plan for this road, so that I would say if I got hit by a bus tomorrow, somebody knows what to do.
Yeah, I would, I would just ask, there's several, you know, areas around that have already the baseline to do that, incorporate that, you know, instead of reinventing the wheel, just take that and apply it to our roads here and like, you start.
What about depth? How are we determining depth? And I ask that question because I want to make sure that, careful and thoughtful that we don't go farther where we don't intend to. You know, how to learn new things that we've tried before.
Sure, well, that's why John is part of this process as well, as well as very clear and we're in, we're working on it. Because we do want to have engineers there, John's gonna go over with that, he's telling me that third and fourth, how they can build that, what the pitches, all that kind of stuff. Oh, sorry, can you hear me? So it's taking out the bigger rocks so you won't have those picking up. It also helps to keep the dust down. And Osceola County is one of the biggest clients for that. And they've been getting this paper base over the bankworm shell because they want to keep that dust down. And this does a little bit better job of that apparently. So we want to at least compare these two side by side and see how they do. And I'll do something similar for residents to be able to submit to us. They can go by and look at pilot site, they can tell us what they think and submit that. So we'll get feedback from the residents as well. Pilot number two is going to be Fifth Avenue by the lake. And we're going to utilize a bankworm shell down there and see how it goes. So those are the two projects we're going to start with. We don't want to go tail and lye with this because we really want to see how it works, how it holds up, and whether it's going to be a better product for the citizens as well as for us. So that's my presentation this evening on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the most impressive you're ever had. Thank you very much.
Is that a second clue to this?
I did not pay him, I promise.
Counselor, any questions, thoughts?
I have some time to review this plan. A couple of questions. First of all, the pilot program, how long do you plan on running the pilot?
So we actually have the materials coming next week. They're going to be coming on the 19th. May, February, we're getting the whole first set up as well for that. So I want at least three or four weeks test it and have people go by. We'll announce it on social media when we're ready for you to go by and we've got it all open and everything's ready to go. And we'll make sure that everyone knows about that signal by three to four weeks at least. I want to at least get it through a rainstorm of some kind, see how it performs, holds up. But I was, you know, John Fitzgibbon and I were pretty impressed with what we laid down next to our yard the other day. So we're kind of hopeful that this is going to be a great, great new product.
And you see, what color is it?
It's the same color as what you have now. In fact, we laid it on the road next to public works. We laid it along on Seventh. And you can't tell the difference. John actually went and jumped up and down on it, compacted it. So we're about to go look at it the next day. And if it doesn't, it kind of forms together. So if it kind of stays together, it doesn't get dusty.
So this is definitely a good test and good progress point. Couple of things, I just want to remind everyone that, or my counsel, that I believe that we say if we put anything new on the road, we would do it, right? So this is good that we're here so we can hopefully do that for you. I just want to make sure that that is definitely something that I recall, like, you know, about, I believe, from Councilperson. I didn't remember. To make sure we do that. So let's get any other questions that we have. Counselperson Depp.
Sorry, I got two.
No, you can have your main line. That's why you're here.
Right. So second question is, after the pilot program, what is next? So is your intention to then produce guidelines, creation plans?
So one of the things that we want to do from the database collected as well is create kind of a tax for those areas so you can start to see areas that are not holding up as well, may have some issues. What we want to do with that database then is have another column that lets my team or anyone who comes in, what's the strategy for this road, what's the repair, what's the maintenance plan for this road? So that I would say if I got hit by a bus tomorrow, somebody knows what to do.
Yeah, I would just ask, there's several, you know, areas around that have already the baseline to do that, incorporate that. Instead of reinventing the wheel, just take that and apply it to our roads here and fight against it.
What about depth? How are we determining depth? And I ask that question because I want to make sure that, careful and thoughtful, that we don't go farther where we don't intend to. You know, learn new things that we've tried before.
Well, that's why John is part of this process as well. It's why it's very clear we're in, we're working on it. Because we do want to have engineers there. John's going to go over with that, too, Charlie, Pat, Bird, and Forrest, how they can build that, what the pitches, all of that stuff. Oh, sorry, can you hear me? So John is going to actually go with the team and make sure over at Third and Forrest we rebuild that area, the pitches are correct and all of that. So that's why John's a big part of this. We do need an engineer to help us with that and Mr. Depp can sort of understand why you would want that.
And that is an area that does need a lot of help. It has some pretty big roles in it and getting worse. Mr. Flatt's here. Some of the, sometimes the stockin' goes, the dump trucks, I'm sorry, the trash trucks on the dirt roads start to, they tend to kind of start that process off. And once it's started, it's worse and worse and worse.
That's why Forest is, that's why Forest is called a rebuild. Because we're going to have to, we're going to have to take some of it out, probably go up four inches or so down and really get below all of those issues that are happening. Rebuild, re-roll, tend to have a new product on top. So I'm actually working with John on that process.
Counselor, any questions, thoughts?
I have a question. What took you so long? You've been here five full weeks.
You can't get good help these days.
I'm excited about this and the fact that we actually have something in front of us. We've been asking for this for a long time. I think it's a great idea to test pilot areas for the residents to look at and see if they, you know, see if they work or if we implemented down a whole entire street. That said, have we identified any areas that were previously reworked that we need to unwork? I know you're still looking, trying to get the big picture here, but...
The biggest thing that I have seen is that we've been grading, we've included a lot of grading and not a lot of rolling. And so I'm excited to see how the roller does in this process versus the grading. That's something I'm very interested in seeing. Everything I see from both us management practices says not only go on your base levels, but roll to your top level too and leave it alone. So we're going to test that theory and see how it works.
Good, great. Thank you. Counsel, any additional thoughts and comments? And Randy, is this the, I mean, that you wish to comment?
Yeah.
I would love to have you join us.
Sure.
I took that with information.
They've changed my comments, but... For instance, 835 Oakdale Street. So I really appreciate the presentation. And I would say that I know there wasn't any, I don't know what, you know the history yet, but there was some problems in the past where some of the stuff from the scraping of the road of a Dale and Andrew school was placed on the road. A lot of people that lived there still don't like that. So when you're looking at, you know, things that we maybe need to undo, that were done, I would say definitely look into those areas. And I actually had conversations with VDP back then about that. And some of it wasn't maybe even legal in terms of air quality and some concerns that the residents in the town had. My husband and I thought many times about, we've never seen them come out with a rule or attempt anything out. And it blows my mind, all it ever is is grading and the dust is definitely out of control. I'm very curious to see what the samples are. And I'm also wondering what impacts this might be to the size of the swales on some of our projects that are proposed now on the road. Because if this controls some of the erosion, maybe some of the swales on some of the projects like Nasty and North Butler doesn't mean be quite as large scale as originally intended. So I'd like to see what the repercussions of the pilot test may be to those projects as well.
Thank you, Randy, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
I want to, just want to go ahead and give your name and your ethics.
Mayor, June 11, 228 West 7th Avenue. I'd echo a couple of comments. I'm going to wait my turn and I like Mr. Strugger just sort of jumps up and calls.
It's getting rainy, she called.
I know, I got the first good word out. I've read the presentation before the meeting and heard you did it. I've seen lots of presentation with a lot of topics in many places. This was great. It was comprehensive, yet detailed, and in a thorough, well researched. It's what this town has needed for a long time. I think it was to Martini. We could have used it years ago, but you're here now and you did a nice job. Makes you feel more comfortable, frankly. The plan itself appears workable and you'll stay on it, create the database little by little, keep the roads maintained, probably will all of them be. Really pleased to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We appreciate the pause within the two. I know that it's something that we're all wanting to really be a part of. The other piece, and I put this out as the challenge, I know it won't happen tomorrow, right? But the other complimentary piece to this, and this will take some more engineering and some, probably some more GPS items and GIS work to be sure that when, when we do have, we know that dirt moves, so when it does move into our drainage areas that we're meeting, those are profiled at our better intent so they do their intended job. Again, I know, you know, next week's fine. I know you're on this radio and, you know, you have a lot going on and we're super appreciative.
But John was about to sign with me, but during this presentation, I brought up my new chart and said, here's the three problems we have to, you know, pay attention to.
But I just want to make sure that, you know, you know and I know you do, and that all the residents know that this is something that we are clear and that we're into the forward on, you know, with reasonable time.
I just might be sure you tell me after, so if you do that, we'll hopefully get some more ideas and pause.
So if there's nothing further, counsel, I would seek a motion to approve the pavement. What do we call this? Not pavement, what do we call this?
Yeah, please don't call it pavement.
Yeah, we were doing so well. Dirt, excuse me, dirt road maintenance presentation. I know that counsel, at this point, would probably be very happy to approve not only the presentation, but the substance that we're going to utilize for the pilot. Counsel, looking for a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the two test sites and the two materials.
Thank you. Counselperson Sapp, I'll look for a second. Wow, that was close to the end. We'll do it to the end. Counsel, if you have a second. Counsel, any further conversation, questions? Seeing none, begin voting with Counselperson Sapp.
Aye.
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 Strike any word of pavement from the record.
Mayor for the minutes, the dates are on, this should be April 13th and April 28th.
Is that the dates there today?
Not on, not on the actual minute drafts.
Oh, on the drafts themselves, not the minutes. I see. Good. All right. So with that change noted, the minutes for April 13th, 2021, and April 28th, 2021, counsel looking for approval, you can approve both of these items that month or you can approve separately, council's choice. Motion good.
I'll make a motion to approve both.
I will, Counselperson Sapp, thank you. Counselperson Sapp has a second, approve both of these items. Do you have a second? Second. You should put the minutes, they're an easy part of this. Thanks, everybody. All right, we have a second. Counselperson Sapp, our team. Any further comment? Any, I, the dates. Seeing none, we begin voting with Counselperson Sapp.
Aye.
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 I'm starting to wonder if this thing's on all of a sudden. Thank you, counsel. We're now moving on to the date, which is contracts and agreements. This is our Waste Pro contract that we're looking for approval tonight. We have a Waste Pro representative, Mr. Flatt is here, and he has asked to give us a 30 or 40 minute presentation on this. Just do one sit there.
I got to go to Windermere Travis.
Yeah. Any questions, counsel? If you have any questions, we can certainly, Mr. Flatt, come up to you and answer those questions.
Clarification to the existing prices are included in this new contract. So the prices did not increase from, okay, this last fiscal year in this RFQ. And the reason that J and J was excluded was because they well exceeded the parameters of the RFQ. The total savings of that one would have been about $30, but they didn't have the service approach nor the real scope of what Windermere is. It's not like a typical HOA or a typical municipality because of the campaign, because of dirt roads. And then the cost difference between FCC and Waste Pro, Waste Pro was a price. And again, they've been with us for, I think, over 20 years now. So they know the town, they know the residents, they know the routes, they know where to not go and where to go and what times to do it. So that's why the selection committee made the recommendation to go with Waste Pro. The initial term of the contract is five years and then it would be extended two years after that.
Thank you, Rob. Counsel, any questions? Or Mr. Flatt from Waste Pro? I have one comment and that is, so in the emergency utilization section, it talks about a timeframe to discuss capacity and prices. I think that it's wise, especially as we come into storm season, we should have that ironed out. It doesn't stuff anything within this contract, but we should work on that ahead of time so we have our degree engine strategy and as well as our monitors. We have all of that set up, Robert.
Yeah, we have the meeting scheduled, we can see it this week or next week, but relative to Waste Pro commercial, our main focus is going to be rain or shine. And we have human inspectors already on board and also Dossens. Because we want to make sure that it's kind of segregated a little bit between solid waste and hurricane-free. But we can also compare it to, if they pick up yard waste, we might just say, okay, well, don't pick up yard waste during this timeframe. We'll just have Dossens do it so we can count that towards the femur reversals.
That sounds good. So I just want to make sure that we have all that worked out, clarified. And the reason for that is often there's a greater level of reimbursement to the town the quicker we can do it. So if you do it in the first 30 days, you know, it'll be 100% or 90% versus 75% later on. So I'm going to take advantage of that because that can be a basis. Counsel, if there's no additional questions or comments?
I was just going to say, I've spoken to Mr. Flatt multiple times on this subject regarding the contractor course, but level of service. And he's been very accommodating in getting things done that I've requested, one of which is that they only pick up yard waste on Wednesdays. I know there's a number of people that put their yard waste out whenever and the trucks are bypassing that. So I think we should put some type of notice out on the town app, Robert, maybe just remind people that yard waste is only Wednesdays, it's not Tuesdays or Fridays, because the trucks at this point, they're just going to bypass it and it's going to sit outside for a week. So if we could do like a little blast or whatever we do on the app for that.
We can do that. I know, I mean, like in my neighborhood, a lot of people do their yard work some weekend and it sits out there until Wednesday, but we can remind them not only is it pickup on Wednesdays, but it has to be done correctly or else it's getting tagged and they have to get a separate charge for that to be picked up.
Yeah, that's a continued problem, I think.
Sure.
People eventually get that anyway. So thank you for your cooperation. And we love our guys who come down every week. They're always very high on customer service and they do a great job. One of the things I saw in the proposal was the possibility of dual store recycling.
Yes.
Is that something that we're considering or is that a future kind of thing? Because I know recycling right now, it's not really working out. I know 85% of workers like to go straight to the dump. And we're just doing it for objects at this point. But I mean, is there a way for us to make that, make that better as far as our recycling can go?
Robert, Mayor, we can certainly help the town with education, education and just continuing with education. There's so many cities, towns, municipalities in the state of Florida that are just having contamination issues. And that happens with the single stream car. It's kind of nature of the beast, but we're seeing some municipalities kind of turning a little bit with their education efforts. That's something we can help, not Robert, we can, again, I can talk about, but essentially styrofoam, food waste, plastic bags, keep those out of recycling because they will contaminate load. Just one bag, one dirty night or...
It's all takes.
It's, yeah, it's either all or nothing, but with the more education that takes place, we can, we hope we turn that around.
You know, we did talk a lot about the recycling piece. I don't know that folks are going to want to go back to the system that we had previously. Like, I do think it's something we got to, you know, keep our eyes on. I mean, we have to recycle, right? So we know that. So we don't want to give that up. People I know really like that single, single point, the fact that it works 50% of the time, but it's not a result that we want. So I think education is a great place to start. Maybe we can get a little better out. What do you think? So sure.
I would love to see us get better. It's disappointing that 85% of our recyclables go to the dump. We should shoot for half of that, at least. But, you know, like I said, it's, we can't not have a recycling program, given if we're just saving 15%. But yeah, we definitely need better education in my house. Whoa. Just to, you know, so it's bad enough in my house, I can imagine if it fell into town by, it's going to be just throw whatever in there.
So I think that education makes it. And then the other piece to it is that there has to be, this has been a big challenge. We talked about this a lot. So the demand, so the market to purchase of those things has been soft as well. So I think it makes those decisions to trash it much easier because it costs more to recycle than it does.
Yeah, there's no market for glass at all.
Open. Yeah.
There really has been, per se. I don't want to get in trouble for saying that, but there's just nowhere to make for glass. And where it is being recycled, it's being crushed and used in the road base, it's like yourselves. So I mean, that's a piece of recycling, but it's not 100% recycling.
Time. Glass now. And let us know what you'd like, get the sand in your cake. You look like a glass town.
I have heard of like some municipalities and I don't know how difficult or easy it is to, and they almost make it a game out of it for roughly, in better terms, you know, that they get tagged if they're, you know, if a load is good or not. And, you know, if I see a tag that it's not good, just like when I don't bundle my stuff and I get a naughty tag since I'm not picking it up and I'm thinking to myself, well, what did I do wrong? Because people keep throwing things in there and they don't get told what they're doing wrong.
Right.
Because all they know is somebody's picking it up.
Yeah. The city of the mayor and I spoke about this briefly, the city of Orlando has a very progressive system of which they have city works, basically the traps is involved and a crew going out and all the things, basically sticking their heads in carts, second carts to see if there is contamination. And if there is, they make a note and look forward with it. But once this cart has been altered a third time, if it's been, if it's continuing, if there is a continuation of contamination, then I believe the cart, second cart is full. But that's kind of aggressive, but that's an option.
I don't want to give it to these guys. Maybe it's a project for ways or something like that, you know, the kids there are always looking for something and maybe they can dumpster dive or...
Definitely reds. I do think that at first, okay, we're not paving anything, we're not encouraging dumpster diving. But I do think education is really, really critical because I don't think that people know that if you put a public spending in there, that's it, it's over. I think if people understood that, they would be more careful and think, you know, if we do some education, we do some tagging, you're going to impact a certain percentage. What that percentage could be, I'm not exactly sure, but I feel like education is always a great place to start. I'm sincere. I agree. Counsel, any additional questions, comments? Dumpster diving practices? Really for motion to approve the Waste Pro contract by the D.
Make a motion to approve.
Counselperson Sapp has the motion tonight. He's the motion maker.
Second.
Second. Counselperson Williams, any further discussion, counsel? Seeing none?
Seeing none, voting with the same.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, counsel. Next is under item E, financial, our town hall roof repairs. Counsel, in front of you, you have an attachment that recommends approval. West Orange Roofing to repair the flat roof portion of this leaky roof for six thousand five. Thank you all. Oh, thank you, sir. It's right up the line, sorry. We're going to make you do the roof as well. We'll stand up there long enough here. Any thoughts or comments, Connie, on the, you made a good case for it in your rating?
Absolutely. I just think it needs to be, you don't want to compromise the building further.
Right. As it's a store, so yes, that application. I think disparity in prices.
Yes, that's going to be my question.
That's just the nature of the construction industry right now.
Just lobbing it.
It's a small job.
It is small, yeah, understood. Counsel, any further questions, comments? You want to climb up there, counsel? Get a ladder and check it out. No, I'm good, I'm taking the crap.
I'm not allowed a ladder.
This is true.
That's Robert's, not me.
Oh, he's, okay, listen, we can do this job, Robert's not going to have to be in the office. I mean, there's like mold magma that goes on top of that, we don't need that. None of those. Counsel, if you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve town hall roof repairs.
Thank you, Counsel Person Depp. We have a second. Oh, we have a second, okay, good. Second from Counsel Person Depp. Any further comments, counsel? Seeing none, begin voting with Counsel Person Depp.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Any additional items for consideration, counsel? Nope, wait, I'm trying to get out now, I'm trying to get out too soon, I just got the second page. Traffic calming, that's where it all comes off the rails. Traffic calming process and requests of application, sitting on the side.
I can do that. This again is similar to the stop sign request form, we're adding into a traffic calming Whenever somebody requests a traffic calming device for a stop sign or something like that, it may make the immediate people happy, but then you'll have three times that amount unhappy with it. And then they're going to ask for, okay, what did you do as far as data inspections, so on and so forth to justify why you put it there? So we want to make sure that there was a process in place that was approved by town council that we would follow in order for us to get the data and then bring it back to town council for approval for the placement, just like the stop signs of a traffic calming device.
Robert, the one thing I noticed in the form, and I just want to make sure I point this out so we don't get ourselves involved. So we talked about Green Book standards, and I know that some of our roads are not, we need those Green Book standards. Would that be, would that exclude that from occurring? That that traffic device still be in place there? Because what I don't want to do is have people thinking that, oh, you know, we got to widen the road there and all of that. And I'm sure that's not what we're saying. I think we're saying that we want to conform with the existing road footprint or...
The direction of town council has been, we're going to create our own design guidelines and not have to follow the Green Book standards.
Right.
So unless it's like West Second Avenue, then, you know, pay the roadway, then we would follow MTCB or Green Book standards as relative to the speed bumps, speed bumps, whatever you call them. As far as dirt roads, the council has made determinations to make sure that we maintain the widths, the existing widths, and not maintain those Green Book standards.
We may want to, so we may just want to make a small tweak in that agreement that just specifies that, so we're not, I don't want to confuse people.
Okay.
Fair enough. Does it mean we couldn't approve it tonight or ahead of time? Counsel, any thoughts?
No, just, you know, I asked you, do any type of traffic calming devices, are there any changes that, you know, roads that way that, you know, they will hold up in order regardless of tickets and things like that? Those speed bumps don't really follow that category, but, you know, we mentioned stop signs and so on and so forth, so they won't be held up in order.
Do you estimate the cost of what one of these might add to a project?
Purchase the speed home on the road?
No, the speed home on the road, not worry about, or the engineering process that's involved in it.
Engineering processes would be John Skidmore going out there and doing inspection, just like he did with the forest and second, and then just drafting a quick report. So the cost would be really de minimis, or be included in our early rate that we have per month.
Okay.
Counsel, any questions, comments, direction? Any motion to approve? With one, one comment on the dirt roads.
Make a motion to approve.
Approve, Counsel Person Depp.
I'll second.
Second, Counsel Person Marji, any further discussion? And for clarification purposes, just for the record, that the dirt road comment is such that the dirt roads do not have to maintain the Green Book standards, that they would follow the footprint and the pathway that we've gone down in that particular road. Someone will make that more eloquent. Any further comments?
Yeah, another question. The, we have a request, like standing request for speed bumps such fifth and Lake Street, do they need to, or will they need to, is that already in order, or do they need to jump in on this process?
What we've done so far is we followed, we followed the process that we laid out in this draft anyways, so probably works on some bug grounds in the street. Let's get into a look at it next.
Okay, good. I know the speed bumps on the road would work great, especially if they're maintained, dug out on one side, so there's a chasm of roads flying down the street. You can hear it, they're pretty thick, so you only do that one time. So I think it's a good, good idea to have those elsewhere.
That's my question, isn't it? I'm sure that's a good reason.
Don't put them far forward. I'm kind of curious, because we never really get a report on what the maintenance has been like on the road. Do you know, or?
I do know that we do get requests to go out and take out and help them. Like, one of the residents, there goes a fairly decent job going and maintaining it on its own.
Like, like, sound good enough more.
We just have to watch, like, when we're going down the...
You thought we were going to shovel, right? Maybe, allegedly. All right, great. Any additional, or shall we vote? I say we shall vote, we'll begin with Counsel Person Depp.
Aye.
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 Thank you, counsel. Next is July pancake breakfast discussion. As you all know, last year we did not have a pancake breakfast in July. We hoped to have one, but we had a little surge at that point. Felt that it wasn't a good idea, it was not a good idea at that point. But we are working on, like, moving forward, starting to have some events. This may be a good line to start with, that we get the feeling from counsel on what they're
At this point, I think it's still too soon to tell. We did have spikes last year in Florida, and another one is predicted, it's obviously not going to be as extreme as it was last year hopefully, but apparently that's how these viruses work. So, I mean, is that a decision we have tonight or can we?
I think we're getting this done.
Just because we need to advertise it, right?
Not advertising, I mean, just giving them the materials is easy. It's getting the volunteers is the hard part. Number one, it's on, it's on weekend, it's on Sunday.
Oh, it's Sunday, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, usually attendance is lower on weekends because people are traveling. And then with the apprehension of the virus, that might make it even harder for we get volunteers as well. So, you know, that's why we want a direction as early as possible to figure out, okay, if you want pancake breakfast to move forward, then we'll go ahead and start contacting those who have volunteered in the past. And if there's more of a need, then we'll try to reach out to other people as well. But I'm not sure who else is having Fourth of July celebrations as of yet in Central Florida.
Okay. I do see that question specifically, second. Actually, Susan, why don't you go ahead, if you'd like to make comment at the podium over here? And we'll continue our discussion. See, you had your hand up.
Susan Carter, one of six Palm Street, just pointing out in reference to pancake breakfast, we still have the kitchen needing the ovens, there needs to be picks, and if they need any other part of that, it is...
That's good information to have. And we use, I know we use the grill.
Sure, we could do that outside.
We could do sausage with sausage. We could do sausage.
We could do it outside, the time could deal.
Right?
I got, obviously, a volunteer, and have to call it off in the last minute, and we must do the rest outside.
Problem with some of the tables?
Certainly we do tables on the porch.
It is summertime, it is morning, and, you know, you worry about rain, definitely, we have two hours. I don't recall if you sent the years where we had that rain, or when it settled in the town hall, but as soon as I say that, we go down, or...
All right, so, okay, so outside?
Makes it better.
So we're trending forward.
I know a lot of people are like, I don't see this. I don't think we have an issue getting volunteers, because so many people want to do it. I'm just wondering if, you know, if you decide to move forward, I mean, we could always do like we did last year and pull quiet in the last minute, and it looks like it's not safe, so.
And, you know, I don't think we necessarily need to do that at that work if that's proven that.
I think, well, restaurants are open, things are moving forward, I think we can do it safely with precautions, I say we move forward.
That's what I was going to ask, is, because they have a tenant, like, do, do volunteers serve people, or do they have to get their, is it like a bucket style? Because I would be worried about cross-tenanting.
We serve, well, you kind of go, it's a little bit of both, it's kind of a hybrid. Folks go through the line back here, and they're served sausage, everyone should use.
But they might take the utensils, somebody else's general.
What staff you want to...
I mean, again, it says just one direction on whether or not to move forward. We can do whatever we can logistically on moving stuff outside. And it's all weather permitting, and if it looks like it's raining, in rain, we can pull it, and whatever we have as far as pancake batter, we just give it to the edge with children's fridge. So it's not any good waste. So we do go any of these people that eat.
You're almost done with what we gave them last year.
Yeah, I know.
And I know staff, you know, the volunteers, and, you know, they just don't, I have an extra precaution, and then, you know, I think we'll have enough town residents that it's a problem with.
I feel like we got to get going sometimes. Let's, let's try it. I know the council doesn't, you know, I mean, if it's, if it's not safe, we won't do it. We'll come back and make stuff, cause we can do it again. And I think we can do as much as possible outside of the... Anything else, let's see, related to the agenda? See nothing, but we'll move on to our mayoral and council liaison reports. Counsel, what do you think?
Yeah, I'd like to, I report that this is what I said. HBV did a meeting twice last month, kind of put together a recommendation that coming workshop on boathouses. There's some continued work on the old schoolhouse. Tom and Jordan have been out there quite a bit. The new pathway to the British and finished, that was an equal cell project. And then our second meeting, we pretty much is kind of looking over logistics of what HBV's role is on the oversight of some of the buildings in town, these are buildings. Should we be doing better?
Right.
We have to be doing.
I like that. Any updates on the historic project? I bring that up because we've lost a few key people.
That's, you know... That actually was mentioned at the last meeting, and kind of circled back around with Robert, there was an app, remember?
Is it?
That podcast app? Yes, and I knew everybody can contribute to it. And then there's a national company that actually does, then they use portions of it too. So we're trying to get that back around, just kind of log down.
Hey, you know, and I didn't bring it up to, you know, it's, when Mr. Mathis died, and it just started making me think like, we're starting to lose some of these folks, but I know we have already to...
It's been a forefront on my mind lately.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I think the app was supported by the NPR, yeah.
So there's, yeah, there's StoryCorps, and then there's a podcast app, I think it's totally for free, and then they actually archived it and put it on the App Store. They somehow monetize it a little bit or something, but I think what you get for free is pretty impressive. I'll remember the name tomorrow when I'm driving.
Counsel Person Sap? Besides all the great locations tonight, do you have any thoughts for us? Counsel Person Marji?
I do. Tree Board has been incredibly busy this month with projects and planting things and emergency phone calls. The highlight was the Central Park project, which was a joint venture between the Tree Board and Parks and Rec Committee, and the park looks great. If you guys have something over there, take a few minutes to go check it out. And I'd like to thank Susan Carter, Dickie Erst, Nora, your committee with Parks and Rec, and then members of both the committees, and all our volunteers who assisted in planting trees, and even others who didn't volunteer, who showed up. Andy, thank you. And worked all day anyway. I have appointments, by the way, I'll have to mention it. So we also received, actually, the Tree Board saved a lot of money, like six thousand dollars by doing the plantings ourselves to help Public Works. Thank you, Public Works, for helping out, and everybody that contributed to that as well. So there was a lot of trees, I think like fifteen or sixteen trees that were planted in Central Park. So we've got some more to go. Obviously, we've got some donations for Curdy Young, Live Oak, and also Gharley Gardens has donated some plants as well. So we also did the City Nature Challenge, April 30th to May 30th, I'm not sure how that went. It was the first time for the town being involved, and, you know, like anything you do for the first time, maybe it takes a little kid up the speed, it was kind of a complicated app for most people, but we had a little bit of involvement, I'm not sure how much. Robert, any idea on that?
We haven't gotten the statistics yet, but what we're trying to create is just one for the town of Windermere, but we have to have two hundred verified picks by one user in order to start the project, so.
Like one person?
So Susan has in front of us doing that, because I have about fifteen verified, and that's, that's it.
Okay. All right, well, you know, maybe next time around, we'll have more involvement. I said it was an interesting project. May 25th, we've got a meeting set up with representatives of Orange County Environmental Protection Department, and that is here at town hall, and it's a rescheduled meeting from one that got canceled, that nobody knew got canceled. So we are, let's see what time it will be, eleven o'clock, right? Susan? Now they changed the time. It's eleven to twelve thirty. Anyway, there's been, there's been some issues with some lakefront properties with the cutting, you know, or severe pruning of cypress trees, both in the water and on land, as well as a number of other emergency tree cutting issues that we've been dealing with lately. And what we're trying to do in Orange County is to establish what we're allowed to do, what we're allowed to complain about, what the residents can't do, so that we can establish some kind of protocol, so that if this, if when this does... so that if this, if when this does happen on a weekend, and it seems to happen every weekend, just when we're losing our tree canopy, is that we'll have a protocol in place that we can, there's steps we can take to stop what's going on or to, you know, to at least mitigate it. I don't know. If it was up to me, I, I would say no tree trimming whatsoever in the town on Saturdays and Sundays because that seems to be when the tree companies come in from Daytona Beach or in city or wherever. They tell the residents, oh, yeah, I checked in the town, county, it's all good. And they start acting away. And by the time, you know, we call 311 or we contact somebody in the county, then it's the way trees go on. And then, of course, they can get fine, but by then you have ancient trees that are just.
Can't run away.
Yeah, it's not up to them, or the farm. So anyways, I know it's a work in progress, but feel free to join us at County Meeting, which is here. We may end up down at the boat ramp also to look at some of the cypress, but it's at 11 o'clock, May 25th.
So, yeah, apart from that, you probably gotta figure out where we are in terms of state statutes and such.
Yeah, I think there was a, where's them tweets? Did that get voted on or approved?
Are you talking about the tree?
Yeah.
No, unfortunately, that, that bill died in the committee or in a committee. That was the ability of a person to approve, which may remember moving trees, but it's the town. Their deal of that now, it didn't get through.
Thank you, Heather.
Sorry.
Did I forget anything, Susan? Susan, are you not mad when you say yes, that you forgot something or no? Get your seat up here as well. Yeah. Councilperson, anything from you or?
Oh, our PD did not meet last month and then the Bay 21 Projects Meeting goes for the Projects Board or Tap Street.
Can you put a sign on the Mariner Bay sign that says what happened there so I can answer everybody's questions? I'm like, what?
The car piece is still there in the Mariner Bay sign, so.
I think, I mean, it's like a magnet. Everybody wants to know, I meant to ask you two months ago what happened to the sign. I'm like, I actually got it. Why?
Um, I sent it to my first ways meeting, it's really cool, online. I don't know, Robert, did they, did you leave the thing on today?
Nothing more than.
Okay, okay, so, and then I, it's not really done yet when Person X met in evil, but they have a meeting come Thursday. I do have the email, but I was at Kalamazoo Castle meeting, so I don't know if anything got called up. I'm not sure, did you?
I didn't, there's no meeting, so.
So I just got the email, but more, did you want to say anything on the weekend? So, next week, yeah, if you want to, because I know that you, I know there's some things on here that.
Yeah, another thing, I started putting in, I turned it back for Thursday, but yeah, if you want more.
Yeah. Okay, I present there.
So we just about finished up the Central Park project. The trees were the very last thing that we put in there and they're almost all done. We've got a few more coming. All the doggy waste stations are being installed. We're putting two at every park and Public Works is putting, they put some in today and the rest of them are going in this week, I think. We are going to be starting a Windermere Rec Center. We are looking at putting a children's playground in there. So you guys will be getting, that'll only come to you probably next, next meeting. One thing we wanted to run past the town is we're looking to put a pickleball court at Windermere Rec. And given our current configuration, it would have to go at the back of the parking lot. When we did the charact years ago, one of their recommendations was to move the entryway to the park, down to the parking lot and tear up the current entryway with the roundabout, just kind of a waste of space. So we looked at that and we, Tommy helped us get sort of a ballpark estimate on what it would cost to do that. And it's probably around $200,000. Then all the existing stuff, create a new entryway, you know, go over the side of the lot and repair that, which is out of our, out of our means. But we wanted to see, you know, if the town has any interest in doing that, then we could, you know, reconsider and see if we can find any funds for it. Because the town is okay leaving it the way it is, then put the pickleball court in the back and.
How many pickleball courts could you fit if you didn't reconfigure the entrance?
If we did it?
If you did not, or maybe if you did not and if you did.
If we did, if we do not, we can put two pickleball courts in at the very end of the parking lot, you know, down by the, the, the water there, the far end of the parking lot.
To the right, all the way to the right?
All the way to the right and then all the way at the end. So you turn right and then left, you go all the way to the very end of the parking lot. So we can put two pickleball courts in there. But we measured if we were to tear out the entryway, you could put in three pickleball courts and a basketball court. It's a huge amount of space in that entryway. And it would use up some of the parking, because if we put pickleball in the parking lot, we're gonna suck up some of the parking. So it's just something for the, you know, that we wanted some direction from the town as to which way you guys feel is better to go. Because if we spend $25,000 building a pickleball court in the parking lot, it's gonna stay there for a while.
Right, and I know pickleball is very popular right now.
Very popular.
And I, so I know we even talked about reconfiguring one of the tennis courts when we resurfaced them and that did not.
The tennis people are really, really opposed to that.
Yeah, I bet. As are the pickleball people opposed to the tennis court, but whatever, it doesn't matter, so. And I get it, so, but yeah, I know it's really, really popular and, alright, $200,000, that's what it's gonna be. Reconfigured, we just have to see if there's funding out there. I don't think we have that in the capital plan.
No, what we can do is begin, explore and see if there's sort of grants available. They, they do go up to $200,000. Figure out what we can do as far as matching that. The only thing that I would caution is if people think that's part of stormwater.
Basin.
Basin for that park. In addition to that, that is a designated hurricane debris site for the town that has been approved by CMO. So we have two sites, which is Fernwood Park and Windermere Recreation Center.
Is there room to expand the current tennis courts to put more tennis courts?
No.
Do pickleball?
No, there isn't any room there because you, you're not closed on both sides.
Yeah, they know, because if you could put builder or anything like that to raise it up, you know, environmental issues and it's a target that.
I don't think you can put it out front. You may be able to, could you, this is a bunch of what it's right now, maybe go down graphical, but you may be able to do something on the island, I don't know. Although I think, didn't we?
We kind of don't want to put some on the, and plus the island is very wet.
It's wet, yeah.
It gets wet. And the other thing, the tennis and pickleball, you kind of want to keep them separate because pickleball apparently is very loud.
Oh.
I, I guess what I was getting at is maybe move all tennis over to Windermere and then on Main Street, pickleball.
Oh, my God.
With that, the.
You're gonna start.
I'm gonna tell him you suggested.
I can sooner leave a road than you can do that.
You don't know what to do now.
I, I suggest to putting the new town administration facility.
Exactly.
It's not, I'm gonna go there.
Maybe I just thought of the difference between pickleball and tennis.
So we're always not gonna solve this night, but I mean, I do think that there's interest in pickleball courts and let's look at some options and see what we can plan ahead for. That's how we get there, so thank you so much. I appreciate everything you guys do so much.
Thank you, and I'll be in the meeting on Thursday. And then the farmer's market, we, that's one thing, so.
We also, we also dedicated the rural site this weekend and did that, and that was pretty cool. And so far, it's like the only thing we actually get to up here and do with official committee, so that was nice. Well attended, everyone's pretty excited, so. Good so. Robert, wanna go next or?
Yeah, it'll be pretty quick. Tomorrow night, again, is my well attended Q and A, so 7:00 PM.
I'm getting, hey, there's a pickleball court, so I'm gonna get you some action.
And glass roads and all that crazy stuff, so I'm gonna squash a lot of next door rumors.
That's a different game.
You're welcome. Yeah, thank you. On May 25th, again, we have the workshop, it's gonna be related to the boathouses. I don't think this is gonna be that long, the discussion, but I'm gonna piggyback that with the American Recovery Act that they discussed with the Department of Treasury on how to spend those funds. And I was gonna present to you on how we should allocate those funds, one with current projects and then two with future projects. To make sure we do it in that three-year period. On May 26th, we do have a workshop on the car project that's at 6:00 PM, that is on Zoom. So it'll be going again, that's a required workshop that Town Council requested prior to the June hearing. We do have a draft PUD ordinance based on the comments from Town Council that we'll go ahead and provide to you as well, so you can review that and see if it mirrors exactly what you wanted or if there's any additional requirements that you're looking to add to that. But make sure that you respond to it individually and not collectively, you can, you don't wanna violate any sunshine laws. Healthy West Orange, as far as the trails, we'll be meeting them in May. Right now, we have deadlines submitting our CIP to Ginger from Akoi on Friday. We're actually gonna submit that tomorrow. So everybody's gonna be submitting it collectively in one package to Healthy West Orange or the West Orange Healthcare District. And hopefully we can allocate, money allocated to not only Phase 1, but the bridge and hopefully Phase 2 and 3 for the trail system. In addition to the Healthy West Orange, we did try to get the state appropriation of $300,000 that failed in the budget reconciliation process, but we did request through Congressman Dennings $752,000 for a trail project here. And it's always good, especially when looking for reelection, that you submit for appropriations, so hopefully get those appropriations approved. And again, there's still talks telling me the next round of stimulus being infrastructure related, so hopefully we'll be able to tap into some of those dollars.
So the other, yeah, and the other piece, thanks, Robert, the, the other piece with the infrastructure stimulus is I believe that if we're able to combine projects within a joint municipality, they, they could be done that way as well. So I think that we're gonna have a lot of leaviness, so that's been pretty exciting, good opportunities. That's good. Your dog has his tag here. I think we're gonna go with DC. How are you feeling, by the way?
I don't know.
Okay, I did that, it hurts for a while.
Yeah, it's a nice piece of wire I have here. Speaking of, we try on Monday and just hope to let everybody know that the boat ramp detail has started up last weekend, Saturday, it wasn't too bad, Sunday got a little bit bit serious, so we're working on that. We're always flexible as far as hours. And especially if it's a holiday, I might have another group out there on Monday for Memorial Day. So we're flexible, so if you hear something or, you know, please feel free to send it on to us so we can evaluate and see if we need to make some changes.
I hear that later is better.
Later is better.
Because there's some gap. And there's also the people who kind of wait out the authorities at meetings.
Yes.
And I would love to catch about 50 jet skis after dark on the other, if we can get permission from the county to run something there.
Well, I'll, I'll get Jason.
Yep.
He's the foreman for that and with the county mall and FWC and.
It might be a good time to send a message early on in the season that I'm gonna do that all summer this year.
About the lost young area?
I mean, what happens is they wait and then they, you know, they just come back after dark and they don't even have lights. You know, and someone eventually, I, I know how this goes.
No, it's, and we, we had a few accidents last year.
Yep, and we had, there was a jet ski operator that was just killed in St. John's, like a week or two, so. So, in an airboat, that's not good.
It's air. I've had a couple, on that note, I've had a couple of residents tell me that, that there are paying shuttles going back and forth from our Fernwood Park to Burt Out. Kids are charging five bucks a piece to pick up other kids or people at the Fernwood Park, taking them to Burt Out and then sending them back later on in the evening. And so it turns into a, I can't use the word here, but there was one resident told me that there was a disturbance on Saturdays. She called me at 8:20, said there were dozens of drunk teenagers who just.
At Fernwood?
At Fernwood. And so, of course, I called the, you know, dispatch number by the time everybody got there. It was all quiet, they all left, but I, I encouraged the resident, called the rabbi, timed it. So, so that, you know, they could get a timely response, but I'm, you know, it's just another concern that, you know.
And then the, the renting the jet skis, people are renting their jet skis out, so I wonder if that's something that Jason was gonna do as well?
Yes. Summertime.
Yes, schools are the option. I sent Town Council the email on a mandatory training, so if I get some more updates on some things that we're gonna cover, please feel free to come out or come sit in and see what we do. I don't know if our town manager is the one to do any taser demonstrations, but that's on the agenda, it's fine.
I'm gonna go to the young.
No.
Definitely not.
No, but what you, we do, it is tradition that we do tapes only council people.
What?
Well, if they don't respond, it's a first chance, you know?
Well, we're not people, our tapes are taped yet, so we have to.
Okay.
I, I've been six, quite a few of the trainees and it's really straight up, it's energy to see what our PD's doing, the training they go through. It was just me coming out of the crowd with the.
Not only that, it gives you perspective on that difficulty, but they have to do every day, making really quick decisions. You, we did that fire range testing with the taser and the, and the weapons and just to, just to watch that and like, man, you have to be training so well, because that was toast. Things happen, you can't even.
And as you know, in our chief, he ran the training division at Orange County for quite some time. He's a subject matter expert in seven different fields. And we don't do just the bare minimum. We go, you know, we qualify more than the one time that we're required twice a year daily, so we're always looking at new training. We always do our active shooter in the school over the summertime when the school's out. So we'll let you know, that's interesting, because we usually have the fire department come in and, you know, because we have to work together when we get an incident, like if we were to get an incident like that. So just to let you know, the National Police Officer's Memorial of the Washington DC was postponed until October. So we still have two officers that, that we tried to send last year, but because of COVID, it was canceled. So we're still working on that. It's my understanding that Florida law enforcement memorial, which we encourage, you know, Town Council members to attend, has been postponed to, I think, September. And Orange County has not announced their memorial yet, but we'll keep it posted.
I'm surprised that State one is canceled with all the hard mantra. That which one, that, that the State one for the memorial was postponed rather than not canceled.
Right, we should, that one falls right in between Washington and Orange County, so.
I do encourage, especially you council people, to go at your first opportunity, it's definitely something worth paying for. I think that it, you know, you're gonna be making decisions on budgets and what, what we need to do in terms of service and staffing and training for our, our department. And it's really good to see exactly what goes into all that and, and the risk and reward. You know, all of the difficulties that go along, especially in these states, so I always encourage everyone to go and spend.
Well, I, we found out about the covered signs and I think Robert's going to, sent everybody an email?
Already sent, thank you, Orange County.
What did he say?
Oh, you already said it's Orange County.
I'll be definitely giving Orange County a call tomorrow, but if you let them know what the sign is.
It said detorts of Parker Bridge Go For, nice bright neon orange sign. I mean, we looked at it, we don't know anything about it, but I guess it's both directions showing a detour, like Parker Bridge Go For Road.
So they're doing some improvements on Parker Bridge Go For Road, I believe it's at the, where they have, like, you know, pretty much if you go straight or take a left and you're.
Dives, yes.
Pretty much you're crossing your fingers and hoping that somebody's gonna go straight to reach your point, or at least. I believe they've done some improvements to that roadway, but they didn't notify us they're gonna be detoring traffic through our town. So those are the signs, they're big, orange detour signs that say Parker Bridge. Um, so that's what the signs are. They, orange detour signs. It's a Parker Street detour.
So this also brings up something that I am sorry, DC, we're all over your time, but we'll make sure you get it all. The, the vision 2050 or something, okay? I'm going to make sure that you all have that, uh, because those are your opportunities where you make sure that the county knows that we've already born the, if you look at areas to build out, it's all south of us. It's like, that's aggressive build out and that is good. And then again, it act exactly where we are again, in terms of traffic. And, you know, we want to make sure that they have our roads down as two lane roads. You don't get any crazy ideas that they're going to make those six lane roads. Um, and they're not to put some reliever roads before they continue to do this. Um, the law is not really on our side in terms of all of that, but we at least need to make sure that we, we weigh in heavily. Back to you, DC, sorry.
That's okay. Um, I didn't write something down, but I, oh, the, uh, we used the app today. As soon as we found out, I got a call from dispatch in Ramondo County about a gas leak. So I transferred them to our dispatch. Uh, it turned out some workers quite occurred by chase. By being hit a gas line. So of course that shuts down pretty much everything. And at the same time, it started to rain. It was almost 14:00 p.m. So we activated our app, woke up the app and installed that. We were just trying to, as best we could, um, keep up with the notifications. And John Fitzgibbons went out there and really got, popped the gas going on that so we could, um, open it as quickly as we could. But as you know, it didn't sit well. It was drivers and the phone calls came to the police station and officers. You know, some people were friendly, some weren't. We did the best that we could do, you know? One, one option was to put cones on all the way down Main Street, put them to the strip. Um, just little things like that. Can we put a police officer on every corner so they don't come down this street? Yeah, it's, we did the best that we could do for what we have. But most importantly was the app. I think the app kind of helped people stay, you know, up to date with when we could open a road.
And you said, that's what it's there for.
And then last, lastly, uh, the chief asked that I just let you all know. And I think what I can do, rather than talk about it in length tonight, is to send to Town Council some of the legislative updates on, um, the George Floyd policing act, which is trying to, um, do away with qualified immunity. And there's really a lot of good information in here. So if you would, let me send it to you. Um, it did pass in the House and now it's on its way to the Senate. And there's some discussion, as it says here, that, um, oh, let's see where it is. It's our understanding that a component of what the Senate is proposing also involves qualified immunity and that there may be some bipartisan consensus in some changes. So this not only affects law enforcement, it affects teachers and other government officials. So really give yourself an opportunity to read some of this. If you don't mind, I'll get it out to you tomorrow. When I get it and, um, you know, we still have time to reach out to our individuals up in the, you know, Senate and House. And that's what we ask you to do, really educate yourselves on this. For me?
Right now, I'm thinking, DC, appreciate that. And yeah, definitely take a look at that. There was also legislation that actually passed, uh, at state level, some in support of, of, of what we call things, in support of the police firm and some in support of the police reform. So it was interesting. It was kind of a new session where you got things passed on both sides. So very interesting session.
And then there are things that do need to change.
Absolutely. I mean, want to be a proponent of.
And then there are, you know, examples in here, please take a talk about, but it's, it is worth reading, just looking at.
Tony, anything from?
I've said enough tonight.
All right, fair enough. Counselor Ramos?
Well, I'll call on your Tom since he's not here tonight to cook pancakes since he's been in for the past, not last year, but many years past. And, um, the, um, sovereign immunity bill died, the one I was telling you about where the, the rate is going to be increased. So that's a good thing for local governments. And then the home-based business bill that I brought up last time, that's waiting for the governor's signature. So I expect that probably some, but I'll work on that.
So less and less that you guys.
Yes, exactly.
All right. Anything else for the new order? Uh, Mayor, I have a request about a quick update on the, the vessel street and, uh, Butler, uh, designs. Are they going to be done by the end of May still, Robert?
Yeah, we just received the 45% designs. Uh, so myself, Conia and John will be reviewing. Uh, we're taking LRP this month and then after that I will start scheduling the public outreach meetings. So probably in about two weeks, the door knockers will be going out.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, that's not this, it's Butler. So Butler Street's a 45% and we received those. Best we have received it because they had to do the extra surveying on Third and River Way.
Do they have a revised timeframe for those?
Uh, should still be managed.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I do have one small report. Um, that is that we have a vendor coming up, a second vendor coming up to take a little bit from the park to look at some camera options up there as well, so we get a follow-up.
Good, thank you. All right. Anything else want to go to the order? Uh, Steve Dunn, we'll turn to you at 16:00 p.m. Thank you all.